Hope everyone had a, has had a great weekend. Looking forward to this week. City Clerk, we do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Kahler.
Present. Tonight, we have Pastor Russell Frazier with First Church of the Nazarene to give our invocation. Want to thank him for being here. And as soon as he's through with the invocation, we have Palmer Stroop, and he's a Paducah Tillman High School sophomore. Welcome, Palmer. Reverend Frazier, if you'll come on up.
Let us pray. Almighty God, I give you praise for your providence and watch care over your creation. You have established authorities and powers in this world. And today, I pray, as you commanded in your word, for all government officials and for the leaders of this nation in which we live. Grant each leader the understanding that there is no authority unless it comes from God, and that these authorities are, exist, that exist are appointed by God. Give Lord to this body the humility necessary to fulfill the task in a way which will glorify you. Grant them compassion for all your creatures, and particularly for those within this city. May, Lord, you bless them with discretion and foresight as they make decisions today. May they truly represent the needs of the people and work in harmony for the advancement of, of this city. Lord, grant to them wisdom and justice and counsel and fortitude. Give them the added courage to honor the consensual decisions made under your direction. Lord, we pray for the citizens of this city as well. And we pray, God, that you would grant to all of us the gift of respect for lawful authority, that we may live as a united people, one nation, under God. And, Lord, I pray that you will unite the hearts of all human beings, that we might live in harmony and in peace. May your kingdom come. May your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. For yours is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Palmer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation tonight. Second Annual One-Day Conference for Electrical Building and Fire Professionals. April Tinsman and Greg Cherry are here to do that presentation. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank y'all. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, this event, you know, reason with this, second time we've done it, that's a way to reach out to the contractors, try to improve customer relations and better working relationship with the contractors. We have contractors coming all over from West Kentucky. We also have building inspectors coming from Owensboro, Bowling Green, Murray, I'm not sure where some of the other cities are. And one of the reasons these other inspectors are coming is because we use the same codes that other cities throughout state use. We also have one inspector coming from Knoxville, Tennessee, so he's a further one away. I'll turn it over to April. She has done most of the coordination for this project. Roger Byrd, Les Figate, also assisted, but April's been the one that's pretty well has run the whole program. Give it to her.
Okay, the event will be held October 25th at the Julian Carroll Convention Center. We have the times approximately from eight to five. Registration will be at 7:30. There are about 110 that have already pre-registered for all the classes. We have three classes. One is for electrical contractors or professionals, a building construction class, and a fire service class on hybrid cars. We will be accepting registrations until Monday, the 21st, and continuing education credits could be earned if, if needed. The building classes, building contractors are not required to have state CEUs, therefore they, they won't earn any, but we do have a, the instructor that's coming is an ICC instructor from the International Code Council. We have gained sponsorships to cover for materials and lunch and instructors' fees, and so it make, we're trying to make the conference totally free for participants to get them to Paducah. We have 23 sponsors to date, and that is the list of what we have so far. Our electrical class will be taught by Bill McGovern, and he is coming from Plano, Texas. He did teach our class last year. We had a lot of positive feedback on him, so we invited him back again. Russell Thornburg is the building inspector, teacher, and he is from the IECC, and he will be teaching a class on the 2009 residential energy inspections. Those changes went into effect recently, so a lot of the residential contractors out there may not know them, and this will be their opportunity to ask the professionals who actually write the code, and if they have questions, they'll get their, you know, straight answers. Then we have a fire service class on hybrid car technology, taught by Michael Shouders, and I believe he is coming from Madisonville or Owensboro. The fire suppression and rescue for hybrid cars is a totally different world for those guys out there that make these calls, and this class is open to not only our own fire department, but across the region. And they're a different animal when you're trying to rescue someone. You cannot cut into those type of vehicles the way you can a regular car, and you could really hurt yourself if you don't know. So that's why we wanted to offer that, because that education, some of them may not know. We do have three hybrid cars that will be on display. Mike Smith Toyota, Paducah Ford, and Royal Oaks are bringing a car down for them to look at, each one of them. And our registration and information is out on the website. Contact myself, or Greg, or Pam Spencer, if anybody has anybody that questions you or asks for information. We're open. Feel free to have them give us a call. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners have a question. I do. Could we go back to one right before that? On the 2009 IECC performing residential energy inspections, is that something that is going to be required, or is it something that a homeowner can do?
What I gather, Les Figate chose this class from his, I guess, feedback of the contractors that he deals with on his inspections, because these new energy codes came into effect, I think we adopted it.
This year.
This year. So, a lot of our local contractors are still learning, and he's helping them with that, so he thought this would be a good chance for them to actually learn from an inspector that writes the code.
Yeah, this, this is part of the new code changes Kentucky's went through, so this is now mandatory in the state of Kentucky. There's a lot of changes, not only on the building side, but also on the electrical side, towards this new code, you know, different type of outlets and lots of other stuff that is changed with this new code adoption by the state.
Concerning energy, mostly.
Insulation requirements and that type of thing.
And the hybrid cars, now which one are you going to cut up?
We would like to cut them up, but I don't think the party members would appreciate that. Any more questions?
So this is the second year.
Yes, sir.
For the conference, and I'd like to applaud you all for, for what you've done in that department since, since we've restructured it. I think a couple of years ago, when we were over, and Chief Kyle was talking about the approach, being more customer-friendly, keeping everybody on the same page, and this is the way you do it with, with conferences like this, so that's a great job, and it should be a great day.
Thank you. One of the contractors that we've talked to said, you know, he's glad to see the City of Paducah taking this initiative, because this, there's no other conferences like this within probably 200 miles from here. You know, all of our people have to go Louisville, Lexington, so to have something like this here is, is good.
So it can grow every year, really?
That's our plan. Hopefully, within the next couple of years, we'll have two or three-day conference before this is all over.
It's good to know that Paducah's taking the lead.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
City Manager, are there any additions or deletions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham, would you do the minutes, please?
I will. I move that the reading of the minutes for October 8, 2013, city commission meetings be waived, and that minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye.
We'll go on to motions. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Documents, insurance certificates, Schmidt Concrete Inc., Brookshire Concrete Construction, agreements and contracts, agreement between the City of Paducah, Paducah and Markham Engineering LLC for the final phase of the Julian Carroll Convention Center renovation project, grant agreement for port security, grant program for riverfront video security project phase two, change orders one and two with Merco Inc. for the Noble Park Pool Sprout Pad project.
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye.
We'll go on to ordinances, adoption. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, accepting an amendment to the grant award for an extension of time with the Office of the Governor, Department for Local Government, for the Paducah-Jackson House Elevator Rehabilitation Project Community Development Block Grant 10-109. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts an amendment to the grant agreement with the Office of the Governor, Department for Local Government, to extend the project completion from date December 31, 2013, to December 31, 2014, for the Paducah-Jackson House Elevator Rehabilitation Project Community Development Block Grant 10-109.
Any discussion? We'll vote on this for Commissioner Watkins.
That's exactly right.
Because he's the one that suggested we get the CDBG grant for the Jackson House elevators, so here's to you, Commissioner Watkins, State Representative now. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving change order number two with Matt Construction and Excavating Inc. for the Riverfront Development Project Phase 1A Piles and Mass Fill, and authorizing the mayor to execute said change order. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves change order number two with Matt Construction and Excavating in the amount of $314,428.82, therefore increasing the total contract price to $4,805,028.82 for the Riverfront Development Project Phase 1A Piles and Mass Fill. Authorizes the Finance Director to transfer the required additional $50,000 for completion of the project from the Investment Fund to the Riverfront Development Project Account, and reduce the transfer from the Investment Fund to the MAP Fund by $50,000, and authorizes the mayor to execute said change order.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Rick, get you come up, please. In going through this, this process, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand a couple of things, so you, or the City Manager, you can, can bring me up to speed on it. Right now, the, the grade angle, one point.
Three, one and a half to one versus three to one.
That's, that's kind of like this.
Steep.
Steep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For stability reasons, purposes.
Mm-hmm.
We need to get that.
Reduced.
Reduced to.
A three to one.
Three to one. Is there any more rock? You tell them, you're saying that we need more rock to do that.
No.
We don't. So, right here, we could, we could, we could use what we already have to.
Right.
Do the job. When this bid process happened, and we, you know, bids came in high, we, so hold up, rebid it, this, this contractor got the job to, to, I'm assuming not to leave it at 1.1.
One and a half to one.
Yeah, not, that was never the, that was never the intention. It was always the intention to get it to a three.
Three to one on the final, on the final build-out.
Okay.
We are, we're between final build-out because we have inadequate material, because we've decided to have an orderly shutdown, so therefore, you know, we didn't, we didn't get the additional material to finish the job.
Okay, but we don't need any more additional rock to slip it at three to one.
No, no, this is actually to reshape what was already there, and I wish I had an easel I could draw.
Well, that's okay. You, you don't have to draw anything. I'm, what I'm, what's going through my head is this. We hit the pause button.
Correct.
And, and we went through all that, you know, we, we got it paused, so what, what are we gonna do? While we were deciding what we were gonna do, they were on a clock.
Correct.
They were on a clock. So, we decided, okay, we're not gonna, we're gonna pause it right here. At that point, why can't we just grade it down?
That's exactly what we're doing, but.
Without, without an extra $50,000.
Okay, that's why I need the easel. Okay, I'll try to do this with, with, I guess, my hands for this, and then give an illustration, because I think the, the public is do that. And I'll try to do it with these papers, if my hands will allow me to.
Can you roll that whiteboard up?
Yeah, that'd be great.
We got time. We can.
Probably here, because TV station's here, and they normally shoot from here. Okay. Let me walk you through a little bit, and then I'll get on the other side, I'm right-handed. Okay, here's, here's the riverfront. Here was our project being built out into the river. The view I'm gonna show you is a slice that's taken through here, where we're, we'll look at a cross-section, as if we were standing here on the riverbank, looking straight out perpendicular to the river, but it's a cross-section. Okay? So if I was to take that cross-section, and what the contractor, this was our desired, I guess, this cross-section of this, it would have looked somewhat like this. Whereas, that slope, and that slope would be at a three to one. Okay? Total build-out. However, the fact that we have inadequate material, the contractor currently has this
Define inadequate.
Inadequate material to finish the job. Recall that we had a recommendation to approve 80,000 tons additional. Now, what our 316,500 tons produced was a volume that's below this, this black curve and that red line. This is the volume that we needed to complete the job. That was the additional 80,000. We voted to pause. Okay? Now, as a result of that, this angle of this material is overloading the river bottom, of which the soils will not bear over a long period of time.
Approximately how long?
I don't, I, I don't, I'm not, I can't tell you how long.
Well, see, that's, and that's the point.
I can't tell you how long, but what's happening with that, Commissioner, is that you have a geotechnical engineer that says the soil stability will not have, that's why the three to one slopes were designed for the project, because that's what the soils would sustain indefinitely.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But not this. Now, here's what's, here's where the, the issue is. For the ultimate build-out, from the contractor's point of view, any rock that's at this layer is not out of place. It's just not, it's insufficient to get to this line. So, the contractor's point of view is, I've got the rock placed where it goes on the job, I just don't have enough stone to finish it, because that's been brought to our attention, we voted not to do it. Now, here's what the contractor is requesting. If he's being made to move this rock such that it's on a three to one, then he's having to move this rock here, again, he's already touched it once, and he's asking, been asked to push it down the hill there. So, for this portion of the job, and that's this area here, that is where this line is for this portion. The upstream portion is fixed. Okay? Because, and I don't know if I should go that far, but he had a bench built out here. He had his rock there. He built that bench, and that was his means and methods. He had it out of bounds here on purpose, because he's flipping this triangle over and putting it in that hole to finish that three to one. Over here, he didn't have that opportunity on that. So these, what's outlined in black here, is not out of place for the ultimate build-out, but it's out of place for the interim, of which the soil stability under here is not gonna stand this load being stacked more vertical on it, where this is a one and a half to one. It's a very steep slope, which is putting a lot of pressure on the river bottom that could cause the soil to fail, which will cause this, and this, you hear me use the term blowout.
Right. So what does the.
It could cause this to come down and do that.
So what does the Corps say?
The Corps?
Uh-huh.
The Corps agrees with the recommendation, as far as the three to one.
But, I mean, as far as time, I mean, we have to bring that to three to one right now? Because, and the reason I'm asking that, when you start talking about settlements and over time, and ask how long, you couldn't tell me how long, so I mean, is this something we gotta do right now?
Okay, you have documentation, you have a geotechnical study that defined the three to one. We've subsequently brought in the geotechnical engineer and asked them, how would you feel about leaving this temporarily while we looked at something? They have written us letters on letterhead emphatically saying, put all those on a three to one. We can't guarantee that you will not have this failure. Now, you can't, you can't put a clock on that. There's also seismic associated with this, stability. Now, are we gonna have an earthquake? No, I don't anticipate an earthquake. You know, we got bigger problems than this, but the soil itself will not sustain that indefinitely. Now, let's just say that we're two or three months into working with PRDA and that, and this slides on us. Now we have a much bigger problem.
Well, quite honestly, I, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this here. This, this project, I think everybody agrees how it's, well, almost everybody. I don't think Allen does, but the, the quality of the project is, is, I'm, I'm with that. I'm fine with it. But, it's kind of like, I don't know. I don't know. Is this enough money? I'm not sure. Will it slide? Don't know. How long? Not sure. And it, it just seems to me like this, this, this process is moving like the Ohio River. It's, no one can tell you exactly what, what you need to, for instance, money-wise, is this gonna make sure everything is done? Yes. Well, it moved. So now, we gotta do this. So you can understand the frustration, not only from the commission, but.
Trust me, I understand the frustration.
I bet you do.
Eventually.
I, I bet you do. So, what, what responsibility, what responsibility does the contractor have, based on what he bid on? Now, because, I mean, I'm, I'm asking a question, because does it change when we hit the pause button? Does that, does that just wipe all those responsibilities out? Because in, in the contract, the responsibilities of the contract, I mean, they're, they're quite lengthy. I mean, it, it talks about everything from the contractor shall provide and pay for all materials labeled, tools, testing, traffic control, temporary facilities, grade control. I'm, now, does, does, because we hit the pause button, does that?
Insufficient material is not his responsibility. For example, when, if.
I don't mean to cut you off, but whose responsibility is that?
Well, I think that's, the, the design engineer has, has culpability with that, because the designers of this gave us a cubic yardage.
And that was.
And the cubic, and that was converted to tons, but the cubic yardage they gave us did not involve settlement in the riverbank either. It was as if this was just gonna float magically on top of the river bottom.
So that, 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 that transition from.
So there's.
Cubic yards to, to tonnage.
Is.
How significant was that?
Represented about 50% of the shortage.
And how did we come to that, that number? Who converted that?
My office. I mean, we, for example, when, when the contractors asked that that cubic yards be converted to tons, we called two rock quarries, two local rock quarries upstream of us. We said, what do you all use for the conversion factor of cubic yards of this material to tons? And they said it could be anywhere from 1.3 to 1.5. I use 1.5 to convert that, and then that's how the 316,550 cubic yards are in, or excuse me, tons are in the, are in the project. But that was after consulting with the rock quarries. Turns out, it 1.5 was closer to that number. So that's, that accounts for 48,700 tons. But we're approximately 65,000 to 80,000 short. That doesn't account, the, the difference in that doesn't account for the sediment in the river bottom.
So to move that right there, the contractor's asking for additional money, or handling it again a second time?
Because where it's sitting right now, from the lines and grades of the project, from the lines and the grades of the project, this is not out of place if the ultimate line is the red line. It's part of the fill, but now, since we've stopped, he's having to rehandle that material to put it in a safe slope for this project to be brought to an orderly shutdown while we decide what we're gonna do in the future.
Rick, would the, would the contractor, wouldn't he have seen at some point that we weren't gonna have enough rock to reach the level that we had originally planned, so that that part could have been finished at a three to one?
He brought it to our attention as soon as he started seeing that, and that's when we first started talking about it. But you're.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
As far as the dates, I don't have those dates committed. He was putting in nine thousand tons a day.
But at some point, he's had to know there's not gonna be enough rock here to get to the level.
When we were at a hundred and fifty thousand tons, I asked them to do two things. Do a gradation and do me a, do me a unit weight. Unit weight being, okay, build me a structure, uh, measure the volume of the structure, tell me what the unit weight, one point five tons per cubic yard, one point three tons per cubic yard, so we could get a feel for that.
I'm just saying, couldn't he have, couldn't he have put, been, started putting it at a three to one as he was seeing that he was gonna be lot, have it less rock than he thought he needed, instead of continuing to put it on the top?
You have to be very careful with, um, this discussion because the means and methods of construction, I cannot dictate. You can't dictate, we can't dictate. He got the job. How he goes about building the project, we don't define. We only observe, and in the end, in the end, did we get what we asked for on that? When he noticed he had a shortage of rock, they notified us. Then we started working on that. Now, as far as this little diagram here, I can, I can blow that up. As far as means and methods, uh, they do things in mass quantity. For example, once you, you know, get your pile structures built, you gotta get the pile structures built before you could start putting the rock around it. You know, uh, it would be nice, um, I guess, if that could've just been brought up perfect from the river bottom at a three to one coming up. But that was not his means and methods, and we cannot tell him how to do that. Contractually, you can ask any contractor. You can inspect. You can't tell me how to do my job.
Is that because they serve as their own engineer?
No, no. Means and methods are how we get the job done, not serve as their own engineer. No. Don't, don't confuse the two. For example, um, let's just take this table, and I'm sorry, take this round table. You could give this table to six cabinet makers, and the procedure that they would use to make that cabinet would not necessarily mimic one another, but in the end, when they brought it in here, it would be the same cabinet. But where they started and where they finished may not be the same, and that's what I'm talking about, means and methods.
Costs may be different, though.
Exactly.
Uh, as a form of checks and balances in, in this, um, in our, in this, uh, our instructions were monthly, monthly reports. I'm assuming they were from the contractor to you.
Actually, we had weekly meetings.
Weekly meetings.
Yeah.
We, that's, that's meeting a lot, and through those meetings, I mean, there wasn't a, Rick, I think we may, I think we may be getting a little short on, on, on material. So, at that point, I would think that would open up a conversation that...
Actually, I was going down there morning, noon, and night. I'd go in first thing in the morning, I'd go at lunch, and I'd go at night before I'd go home. Okay? And as I'm seeing this, it's kinda hard, it's kinda hard as somebody standing on the shore to measure it. You have to go out and survey it, you know?
But these, these reports that I'm talking about, I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't those reports, uh, have that type of information in it? You say you met weekly, um...
We're, we're, we're meeting on the progress of the, of the, of the job, okay? We're, we're more concerned with, are we going to expend the three million dollars and make the deadline on the HUD money, uh, by September the twentieth? I was very concerned that we weren't gonna make that deadline because we didn't start placing rock until about June the fourth. Okay? And then we placed rock for about a week or ten days, and their first, uh, method of construction was not very productive, and then they moved on. I was getting concerned that they weren't gonna be able to move the rock in. Then they made adjustments to start moving rock very rapidly on that.
Rick, going back to the ordinance at hand, um, would, as you look at the bird's eye view, the top-down view, the, the, on the left, is the water comes downstream. Would there be a, would the, would the water eddy around the mass fill? Is that anything to do with that instability on the downstream side of the mass fill? Or water would eddy around there and kinda swirl around? Is that, or does it curl around? Or is that not a, is that, is that part of that whole deal about instability?
No.
Good. Glad it didn't. Okay.
So, go ahead.
I was just saying, what we're really talking about here, I guess we can't go to Lloyd's of London. We're sorta creating us an insurance policy, a rag. Is that a fair, fair way to look at it, Rick?
As you look at this project moving forward, if you know you have an unstable or an excessive load on your river bottom that's documented, then you won't have a re, any recourse in the event you have a failure on that.
Right.
Because you are accepting the risk. You're not buying insurance. I'm not buying insurance. I will take the risk. That's the, that's the decision that's before you.
So, is, if you do, if we do this, it will be at the three to one slope? So, next year, when we pick back up with the project, with the, the plan that's developed, it will be at a three to one slope?
Yes.
So, it will stand as it is for that, to continue with the project?
Yeah, that's, that's when you'll, that's when you'll be deciding, okay, let me, let me kinda fix this.
Today, Rick, is it a three to one below the water line?
Yes, upstream. For this portion here, yes.
Okay.
For this portion here, no. Because this is synonymous with this. This is synonymous with what I just erased, where this is.
And Thursday, when we walked that, that large pile of rock, did that, is that what came out of the executive end parking lot?
The pile that was up here, yes.
Okay.
That was up on, up on the high part, yeah.
Okay. So, so I wanna go back to my question. On doing this now, is that something, is it just additional work that would have to be done next year anyway, when we pick back up with this project in whatever form that we do? This would have to be done anyway, so we're actually advancing work that we might have to do next year, this year? It would have to be at a three to one slope anyway?
If I understand your question, that is yes. Okay?
It's work that would have to be done anyway.
The, what you're, what, yes, what you're going to have to decide on, or PRDA in conjunction with the, with this board, is what to do about what's not done.
Right. What, that's what they're gonna do, is decide the finish out of the project. But this part is just really completing something that would ha, stabilizing it for now. It would have to be completed anyway next year. It would have to be at the three to one slope next year.
Yes.
So, really, in a way, we're just advancing money that would have to be spent next year, this year, to get it to the three to one slope.
Not necessarily, and here's why.
I really wish you'd just answer yes.
I'm not going to because there's professionals and contractors that are observing this as well. I'm not gonna do that.
I'm just teasing, Rick. Go ahead and explain it.
This three to one right here is what the one we're looking for, okay? But depending on what we do in the future, this three to one will be developed later. This does not replace that three to one. It just stabilizes it for the time being. The only way that replaces that is that this never gets built. That's the only way.
Was that the question? I didn't think that was the question.
But it does establish a contour that's gonna be built up from, right?
Yes, yes, because if they build on top of that...
I, I would like Rick, for Jeff to explain it. Let him answer that, just as you just did.
Okay.
Wow. Th- this is establishing the contour that represents the final grade, and what Rick is saying is there's more material that will be put on top of that, I assume, following the same grade line that will be accomplished from this change order.
Only if we decide to use the original lines and grades of the project as it exists today.
And that would be the assumption, I think.
If that's the assumption, correct.
And that brings me to my question, and I asked Jeff this earlier today. If we use the original lines and grades currently in the contract, the contractor would come back a year from now and deal with the settlement and come back in with the fill. But since we're not using the original lines and grades, we've hit the pause button, we're not gonna be held to that, correct? This'll be the end. We're done.
Once Mike, uh, completes this change order, your responsibilities with them will conclude.
So, we would rebid the project?
Anything in excess, anything we'd...
The next steps that we take would be...
Anything in conclusion with Mike would be a rebid, yes, ma'am.
So, we won't be saddling PRDA with any contractual...
Anything that we, that we do in the future will be brand new.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm just trying to make, make...
Yeah.
Sure, we're clear.
We would still have all the original plans that develops the park overlooking the river, the beautiful area for people to enjoy. We would still have all of those plans in place. We would not have a contract with Mac Construction to do any of the additional work.
The only way that, the only way that would happen is that they are the, uh, winning bidder of any other...
Any future work.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's essentially fifty thousand dollars to get this done, and then we're, we're good to go for a while?
Yes.
And this, and this is totally unbinding as far as the contractor, less fifty thousand dollars than putting that grade at three point one where it is right now, right there. I mean, that, it's, it's, it's total on us to pay for that.
The way I, may I say something here? The way I understand it, Commissioner, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Rick, what they've done right there is what they were obligated to do until we ran out of rock.
Correct.
So, they did what they were supposed to do.
Because it's below...
Ran out of rock.
It's below the planned grade.
And because we don't have the rock to make it a three to one, we've got to take care of that one to one.
And the project needs to be orderly, shut down, and stabilized.
But we do have the rock to make it a three to one.
No, I'm, no, I'm talking about to the, to the...
I'm talking about right now, where it is right now. We could use that same rock, but it's gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars for second handling.
Now, what I'm, now, what I'm saying is, where it is right now, at a, at a one to one, is where it should be before he brings in the additional rock to make it a three to one, but we stopped it at a one to one.
Correct.
So, he didn't have the extra rock to put on top of it to make that three to one.
Correct.
But we were always going, when we talk about hitting the pause button, we were always gonna reach a stopping point this year to let it settle, and we were gonna finish it next year. We just didn't have as much rock to build it up as we, as it should have been, to finish it as the park.
Final design, final elevation, final contours.
Which would have required eight hundred thousand dollars.
So, that, so that rock where it is right now, at this angle right here...
Is where it's supposed to be.
But you, well, we're not gonna, it's unstable, it's not stable.
But it would've been stable had we authorized the additional rock.
But it's, but it's not now. So, so what I'm saying is this, with the rock, with the existing rock that we have, to slope that out...
We don't have any additional rock.
You're not taking existing rock.
No, I'm talking about what we already have. I'm not talking about what we don't have, what we have right now. To bring that to a three to one is gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars for a second handling.
But it does protect it, and it will be keeping it at three to one for next year.
Yes.
When we pick it back up, it will be at three to one at that slope.
Yes.
And we have stability in the interim.
Yes.
I think those guys should do it. I, I don't think we should pay for, have to pay for that, man. But that's just me.
I, I mean, I, and I voiced this opinion last week, 'cause I felt like it was in the contract, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, Commissioner, but, I mean, obviously, I, Rick, you're the engineer, and you know, I, I don't agree with that 'cause I feel like when they're picking up the executive end parking lot, that they knew we were running short, we were gonna have to go to a three to one, and it should've been put to where it was a three to one. But it says, the rock delivered in place. In place is in place. It's, but you're the engineer, and I'm gonna have to go with you on that. I mean, you're the expert, and you're telling us that that's not the way it is. They did it the way they should've done it, and...
It's, it's, it's within the envelope of the finished grade of the project, and we decided not to move forward with finishing the project because we needed additional stone. So, reshaping to orderly shut down the project is causing him to move it in the shape, even though he's already got it in the envelope. Now, if he was outside the envelope, there would be no charge, but the fact that it's inside the envelope, it's already in place, and he's having to...
I can make you a comment.
Okay.
You'll just, you'll just...
Just blow me...
I've lost my mind.
Just blow me...
You gave me a great segue.
Blow me over, man.
All right. As Richard said, and I guess I'll paraphrase it, if you've been vacationing on Mars for like the last ten months, as Richard said, you'll know that I've been voting against this project. And tonight, I found myself in that awkward of all situations and knowing that says, tonight, I can't vote against this project for this piece of money. And that may sound just like whiplash, but I'm gonna vote to spend the money tonight for this piece of property to preserve the four hundred, four million and seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks we've already invested in rock and mass fills and piloting, 'cause I don't want it in the spring to have it all floating down the river and jammed against the Amsted Dam. Now, having said that, while you're recovering from whiplash, um, I'm still gonna thank you, Richard, on the rest of it. I'm not for the transit boat dock, and the marina, the fueled up and all that junk, and I'm gonna vote against that stuff.
Well, who knew I'm gonna vote for it?
Well, I don't know.
I mean, I may vote against it.
What I'm saying is, is but for this thing, as much as I'm torn right into, yeah, I'm gonna vote yes tonight.
You're voting for what would fill out into a beautiful park overlooking the river. I just wanna get back to the singing area. So, we keep that visualization of our long-term goal of riverfront development that would open up more of a park and more of our riverfront for our citizens.
But I'm shitting for the boat dock.
All right, so, we can have a vote here, city clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner Gault?
I'm gonna vote yes, but...
Commissioner Rhodes?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Kayler?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement for position of police chief. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an employment agreement between the City of Paducah and Brandon Barnhill for employment as police chief of the City of Paducah.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Is everyone sure they made the right discussion?
Yes.
Just kidding. Get him back in.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
So, it's all official now, everything's done?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into ordinances introduction. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Convention Center Corporation for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Convention Center Corporation in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to be paid in quarterly installments. First quarter, thirty four thousand five hundred dollars, less insurance premiums. Second, third, fourth quarters, twenty one thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars thirty-three cents each to market and operate the Expo Center and Julian Carroll Convention Center. This contract shall expire June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? It's a contract we do every year.
It has gone down, I believe this is the third year in a row.
Mm-hmm, that's always good. City managers report.
Well, I appreciate the, the discussion on the change order item. I, as difficult as it is this, I think it's extremely important that everybody have the best understanding as they, as possible, so, um, thanks everybody for that. Uh, I would comment that I, I can't believe that nobody seized upon the opportunity to associate former Commissioner Watkins and the elevator issue with elevating to higher office.
He knew he was on the way up at that time, didn't he? I'm not sure that was higher. I mean, there's nothing higher than serving your public right here at Grassroots Lab.
I knew I would run some risk by saying that, but I do remember helping sell, serve meals over there a couple of years ago, and, and hearing it said that folks that were unable to get down to the basement, which is where the dining hall was, because the elevator were just sort of, sort of out of luck for the day, and didn't sound very good, so, um, this weekend, as everybody knows, is a big weekend in Paducah for a number of reasons. The Oktoberfest and the Independence Bank, Sheryl Crow concert taking place. The city obviously gets involved in a, a big way when activities of that scale take place, and we're part of the organization, and a, a number of our people and departments have been involved with that. Mark Thompson is here tonight to apprise you of what's going on there, and, and some of the measures that the city will be taking to help make that happen. So, Mark, if you would be so kind.
Mayor Commissioners, good to be here. Uh, again, this is another weekend in Paducah. If you are bored, it's your own fault, because we're having a, a lot of activities going on, kicking off Saturday morning with the All-Timers Walk, the Community Foundation Fund Run, Oktoberfest out in Noble Park, there's the Ups and Downs Walk, and finally, the Gary Allen and Sheryl Crow concert. And as a city manager said, we've touched every department in here, and we couldn't be doing it without any of them. We, it's been busy, we've had meetings on top of meetings, and in fact, some of these meetings, uh, my initial meetings with Independence Bank started well over a year ago, so, in trying to work this out. But just some of the logistics, for, for y'all's information, in case, in case people start asking, excuse me, the stage is actually going to be facing the farmer's market, and it's going to be on Jefferson, that first block between Water and Second Street. And there's going to be fencing going up, and a lot of this is going to start tomorrow. Fencing going up, uh, the Independence Bank was definite about their wanting to try to keep as much of the parking lots open for as long as they could, to help the restaurants downtown throughout the week. They didn't ask for anything to be closed until we mark, closed them off systematically, getting ready for the crowds and that sort of thing. So, uh, after tomorrow, a part of, about a third of the parking lot in front of Whalers will be fenced in. The stage will be, a lot of it will be up tomorrow afternoon, uh, and going into Thursday and Friday. The parking lot, uh, farmer's market parking lot, will be closing section by section, because there's going to be fencing put up for, uh, special seating, as well as, we want to make sure that the farmer's market is, remains open. On Friday night, or actually Saturday morning, effective four AM, that parking lot will be closed except for people who are visiting the farmer's market and in front of the farmer's market. At that point, beginning at four AM and beyond, if there's vehicles in that part and parked, they will be towed. We were going to have, we're going to have to have that park, that parking lot completely cleared. And it will be posted, effective tomorrow, and as the fencing goes up, so that part of that parking lot, only on Saturday. Farmer's Market will be remaining open until two o'clock. They can stay open until two o'clock if they want on that day. And we've been working with those folks to keep them abreast of what's happening. So, uh, we're going to have staff there to help people in and out during that air, in that area, but the rest of it will be blocked off. So, that's kind of as it goes. The concert, of course, Oktoberfest will be going from eleven to five, down on, uh, the riverside of the Market House, and on to, through the Max's into Maiden Alley. So that'll be going until eleven, to five o'clock. At six o'clock is when the concert starts. And six o'clock, uh, until about nine, and then nine, nine fifteen will be the fireworks that'll be going on that night. There will be no parking in, of course, we still have a pretty good sized hole where the executive parking lot was, but that's the area where the fireworks are going to be shot from. We're not going to be shooting them from a barge this time. We're going to be putting them on dry land, so that saves considerable amount of money there, too.
And Independence Bank is paying for that?
And they're paying for everything on that. And there will be food. We are, uh, Neil's Catering is coordinating all of the food, and a portion of that will be going to charity. I, I believe Independence Bank has selected Relay for Life as their charity, and they will be making contributions to that also. Um, trying to think what else there is.
Little spruce shop going on in the downtown area.
Oh, yes, we've, we've been, uh, staff has been going on. We did have another activity a few weeks ago that really took it, but, uh, actually, this rain today has helped, uh, with the parking lots and that sort of thing, keeps those clean. And so, it's, it's going to be a big event, but I think we're ready for it, but we wouldn't be ready for it without the cooperation of all your departments and everybody's, uh, efficient help. We are actually going to have a, a little, a roundtable meeting in the morning, just to make sure everybody's still on the same page. We actually had to make a correction on the Independence Bank website about street closings today, but they reacted as quickly as we pointed it out to them, and, uh, it's, you know, it's a pretty big deal, and we're really proud to be part of it.
Thank you all for all you're doing for it.
We're doing, uh, it's not just me, we've got a lot of folks that are hands-on with this, and it's going to be a great project.
Our city departments always do a great job with all the different activities we have in Paducah, and they're all to be commended for that, for their good...
Anytime you're out, particularly, stop and thank them. Uh, the police officers are going to have a busy, busy day, going all over the place. Park staff, public work staff, everybody's really going to be, is doing a bang-up job.
Well, I just...
Barbecue got us ready.
Just, just tested us.
This doesn't relate to you, Mark.
Okay.
Uh, we attended the I sixty-nine conference today in Madisonville, and Paducah was very well represented. I would say, what, maybe...
Six or seven at least.
Yeah. Steve Irwin was there, Mary Hammond's, you, Lynn King, and, um...
Bill Paxton and Dan Key.
Yep, so we, we were well represented. Uh, and of course, that project has been ongoing for years, but, um, a, a major portion of it is coming through Kentucky, going by Mayfield and Calvert City. Uh, it was a good explanation of the project and where we are with it, the funding that we have available, and where future funding's coming from, but it's beginning to look more and more like a reality. Um, and it will be good, you know, as, as they pointed out, all the growth, economic growth is off of interstates. And we, we learned that quickly when I twenty-four came through Paducah, and the boon that it, it was for us. Anything else from that conference center that...
No, Governor Beshear spoke and was very supportive of the project. It does turn, as it comes down off of I twenty-four to go toward Mayfield and Fulton, at that Calvert City interchange.
And the Parkway there.
Yeah, the Parkway.
So some of it follows I twenty-four. Anytime they can do an, an interstate, on top of an interstate, it's, they save money. So, um, it was good news. Anything else? Oh, we're working, um, to, for a couple of buildings, we're still working to find GPS a home, and they have to move out in December, so, some, a little progress is being made on that, and we're working with GPS on a couple of buildings that might turn out to be good buildings for them.
Do we, do we have like, do we know like, by the middle of November when we know? Will we, because I, I mean...
You have a pretty good idea by then.
I think so, yeah, I think so. We're wanting to, uh, take a little bit of time to really size up the make-ready aspect of it, because obviously, these are not new buildings, so there are certain things that need to be done in order to make them functional and, and so on and so forth.
So they'll, they won't, my thought process is they won't be pushed really hard right at the holidays to get out?
And, and I think, and I've talked to Jeff about this, if...
Would not be keeping with the holiday spirit, that's for sure.
If we knew for sure that we had a building, I think Paducah Water would work with us, you know, give them a couple of months. If, if we knew that building was going to be there within a month or two, I don't think they would just kick them out, so, we've got some leeway there.
Okay, all right.
Right, Alan?
I'll work on them, on the board.
Anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Uh, we, were we into commissioner comments?
Oh, sure, sorry. Sorry.
Um, uh, just wanted to, I, um, uh, over fall break, I took some time to go downtown and, and talk to some, um, um, business owners, uh, because I, with, with school in session, it's hard for me to, to, to get away. But that brought to my mind that we are still looking for a, um, director for PRA, and, uh, the comments that I got from, uh, several of the folks that I spoke with, they were pretty much just asking that what, where we are, where are we with that? Um, are we, uh, are we close? What's the dynamics moving forward? I told them we were working on that, so I think at some point here, relatively soon, we need to sit down and, and powwow about exactly what we want to do with that, with that office, uh, if we want to just blow it up and do something different, uh, look at what's worked, what hasn't worked, uh, the expectations from the business owners, get their input, um, and then, and start that process. So, uh, just wanted to mention that I told the guys that I spoke with that I would bring that up tonight, so, trying to be true.
I know all of us have given Jeff some input on what, you know, our ideas were with that department moving forward. Um, and I, I know you've taken on...
Yeah, I certainly didn't get the, uh, I believe your direction to me was, involved the word reorganization, I don't know if that quite reaches a level, blow it up and do something different, but I, quite frankly, I think that's sort of what we're doing. I, I, I'm not hearing anybody say that they think the, the former model, uh, is something we need to necessarily follow. If that were the case, we'd have probably recruited and hired a director by now, but that, I don't believe was our intention, and, uh, I, I do have a, a lot of information at hand, and pull a lot of thoughts together. There's a couple more, uh, meetings I think that need to be held. I believe that we have evidenced, uh, good progress during the interim, and, and quite frankly, advanced some things that had either stalled out or weren't advancing. I think in the meantime, efforts have, uh, picked up in other areas that have, uh, helped move forward, um, some things as well, so I think we've, we've learned where other resources might be, other interests and initiatives might lie as well. So, having said that, I, I, I hope everybody is of the belief and understanding that, um, the mission, uh, is moving forward. Uh, it's just critically important that however we restructure, that we, we do so in a manner that it's going to be sustainable, and bring about the degree of confidence in the program that I think we all need. So, um, I think that you'll have something, um, before, you before too long, so...
I, I would just echo yours, and I've mentioned this to you, I think it's time that we make a decision and move forward with it. I think we owe that to our downtown, I think we owe that to that board. I think it's, I think it's time to make some decisions and follow through with it.
Thank you.
Any other comments before I cut you all off?
Before you slam that gavel?
Okay, meeting is adjourned.
Watch your hands, Jeff.